Hey, before going, I made it, I made it the order today. Yeah, my wife's all working. We'll see what happens.
I did.
Good news.
Right.
Proclamation.
I got to see on the agenda.
Okay. Awareness Month. Hey. The gun. I did spend a couple of hours trying to find a way to change that. It really is just unfortunate. And honestly, this is pretty simple. Maybe for something we can put in a fitting for him or whatever. Yeah, the trouble is keep going.
Garner City Council has come to order if you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have some business to address this evening. First order is several proclamations. April is a very popular month for awareness. Yesterday, I had the privilege of being, participating in a function called Blazing the Trail for Autism Awareness out at Celebration Park. We had a huge turnout of folks who were impacted by the disorders related to autism and we're becoming more and more aware of that. And diagnosis is actually increasing, so the numbers of children who are impacted, certain families who are impacted, is growing. Today is World Autism Awareness Day, and there's a little celebration called Light It Up Blue. Hopefully, if not going to, would everything work out, the lights around City Hall will be blue this evening to recognize that and to make folks aware of autism awareness. But I was able to give that proclamation yesterday to a couple of wonderful, wonderful volunteers in our community, Jennifer Smith and Crystal Hank, who put that together. And thanks to Parks and Rec for assisting on that. But tonight, we have three proclamations. The first is Fair Housing Month, and if Melissa would come down and accept the proclamation on behalf of Community Development, fair housing is something that is very important and access to good housing is important for all communities. Whereas, Congress of the United States of America passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas, the City of Gardner, Kansas is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws. Whereas, fair housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that were proven upon investigation to be violation of the fair housing laws. And whereas, equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city, they can and should be achieved. Now, therefore, we have resolved that I, David Sead, as other mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Fair Housing Month to promote fair housing practices throughout the city. So, thank you very much. Thanks for everything on the community development side. Is anything you want to say about fair housing here in Garner?
Well, I definitely know that one of the big things that we worked on last year, as I said, everybody was getting the property code passed, and that's one of the things that helps promote quality housing for all people, is making sure that it's actually up to code in livable conditions. I've more to do in that area, but assignments are done.
Great. Thank you very much. April, whoops, these are my notes, is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Melanie Austin is here from Mozza to accept the proclamation on behalf of that order. Thank you. Whereas, national, whoops, wrong. There we go. Whereas, in the United States, one in six women and one in 33 men, as experience they completed or attempted rape in her, his lifetime. And whereas, every two minutes, someone in the United States is sexually assaulted. And in Kansas, one rape was reported every seven hours and 48 minutes in 2009. And whereas, given these statistics, the Kansas Coalition Against Sexual and Domestic Violence estimates that 3,040 women and 962 men are raped each year in Kansas. And whereas, in 2010 advocacy groups served 12% more sexual assault victims face-to-face than in 2008. And in 2010 advocacy programs, into 26% more sexual assault crisis calls than in 2008. And whereas, the economic cost of rape was conservatively estimated at $87,000 per victim, and based on inflation, the estimated number of Kansas victims, the economic cost of rape in Kansas is more than $512 million annually. And whereas, when unreported rapes are considered only 2%, while rapes in the United States are ever incarcerated for their crimes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Sead, as other mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Gardner, and encourage all citizens to provide support for survivors of this heinous crime and to make sexual assault prevention efforts a priority. So, thank you very much for all you do at Mozza. I know it's a great organization. Anything you'd like to tell?
Sure. I can just, I can just say it's a very important month for bringing awareness to sexual assault. Not only does it help aid in prevention, but it also helps victims to feel like they can report it and talk about it. So, we are doing a number of events throughout the metro this year during April. I think we've got about 50 different things going on, so we'll be quite busy. You can go to our website if you want to check out those events at mozza.org. And then, just a reminder that we do provide free counseling and therapy for victims of sexual assault, and we also have a 24-hour practice line that people can call if they are someone they know has ever been affected. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you so much. It's very important, very important that we're aware, and it is a crime that is something that people are embarrassed about and should not be.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's the challenge, so coming out and making sure that people are aware.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then, finally, Gillian McDaniel is here from Sunflower House in Lemexah?
Shawnee.
Shawnee, okay, close. April is also National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So, whereas, National Child Abuse Prevention Month will be recognized throughout the United States in April 2012, and whereas, many children were reported abused and neglected in Johnson County last year, and whereas, child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas, child abuse neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas, child abuse neglect not only directs harm to children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behavior such as smoking. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Sead, as other mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Gardner, Kansas, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community's interest. It is a silent thing, and so it's important that we are aware. So, can you tell us a little bit about Sunflower?
Thank you. Yes, I'm an ambassador for the Sunflower House, so I love the community and speak and educate not only children, but young adults and adults about child abuse, physical and sexual, because, like you said, it is private, and people are quiet about it, awkward situation. So, we want to make sure that children know that it's okay to come forward. So, we go out to the community, we have many events all year, but especially this month, Child Abuse Prevention Month. One in particular is our Happy Bear play, which we do here in Gardner for schools. So, they come in and tell children about welcome and unwelcome touches. And I have seen it, and it's fantastic. They do respond, they have many opinions and interact with Happy Bear. So, yeah, and we also have forensic onsite interviews with children and their families. So, we're very fortunate to have that. But we need to help people and help people.
And make people aware and make sure that there are places to get help.
To go and there are people to talk to. So, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you still very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have time allotted on the agenda for public comment, for anyone who wishes to speak on a matter that is not part of a public hearing or a matter that is not on our agenda. That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Item one, please.
Okay. How would council like to proceed with item two and three?
I move we approve consent agenda, item number two and three. Second.
Motion Morrow, second, Brockerman, that we approve items two and three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The minutes.
On item four of the minutes, where we talked about the additional treatment capacity, on the next page, where it says Jeff White with Columbia Capital Management provided additional information. After that, after the end of that sentence, I'd like to add, Mr. White said that the debt service increase would be $800,000 per year for a 20-year term. Councilmember Fotovich asked what the impact would be on sewer rates, to which Ms. Gurley replied, she does not know. Councilmember Fotovich said that it would cost each citizen $42 a year, so a family of five would pay over $200 a year, at which point Councilmember Morrow called for the question, just to elaborate on what was actually said then.
Okay. Any objections to the addition? All right, is there a motion?
I move we approve the minutes with the additions that Councilmember Fotovich asked for.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Morrow, that we approve minutes with stated addition. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. New business item, so hello, Brian, by the way, sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier. Brian Kidney for the new council members. Brian was our finance director some years ago. Yes, indeed. So, new business item number one, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the delivery of $6,230,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, series 2012B, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, for the purpose of temporarily financing the cost of certain internal improvements of the city and approving policies and procedures relating to the city's general obligation debt. Laura.
Before we vote on this, we need to change the amount.
Okay.
So, let me go through this real quick, and then we'll go back to that. At the March 5 meeting, council authorized the following, all of these following new business items, debt sale. This particular $6,245,000 is for the benefit district and the city sewer expansion related to the new school campus. As we've said before, 4.9 million of this is a benefit district to be shared equally between the city and the school, and the remaining 1.3 million is the city's project alone, and no one will share that, we will pay it ourselves. So, also included in this resolution authorizing the $6.2 million in temporary notes is a policy, a reference to a policy, a post issuance compliance and continuing disclosure undertaking policies and procedures policy, that when you pass this resolution, you will also be passing this policy. And what you need to know about this is the IRS has become making it very clear that they prefer written policies for how the city complies with all the laws that govern what we do after, when we get our money, what we do with the money, how we spend the money, how we keep track of the money, how we disclose. And there's nothing new here, except the policy itself. We've been doing these things, there are no new rules, and it's always been your staff's responsibility to make sure these things get done. It's just now it's in writing, and they prefer it to be in writing because they've added a checkbox on a form we do with every bond issue that says, do you have a written policy? And if you don't check it, I'm sure they'll be out to visit us. And if you do check it, they want us to make, when they come visit, they better see a policy. So, that's where we're at. We also, we did have this debt sale today for both these temporary notes and the sewer loan refinancing that are the next two items. And Tom Calico and Brian Kidney are here, which brings us here to talk about the debt sale.
Give me a minute. I'm going to be faster than Tyshaun Taylor can do a fast break.
You can't reach that high.
Can't reach that high. I'll be that fast. We did sell two bond issuance today, as Laura alluded to. First was the 2012B temporary notes. As was alluded to, that amount was increased from originally $6,230,000 to $6,245,000. That has everything to do with capitalized interest, as we typically do for these types of construction projects. What you want to do is you want to basically start paying the debt service after the project's been constructed. Of course, we owe interest on that money that we're borrowing during that construction period, so the way we normally handle that and the way it's handled with this temporary note is we borrowed the money to pay that interest, and then, at the time that the bonds are actually issued, then the benefit district participants will pay everything back, including, you know, the money for the capitalized interest. So, because we had assumed a rate, or estimated a rate of 0.6% on these temporary notes back some months ago, and interest rates have risen since then, we ended up with a 1% rate, so from 0.6 to 1, what ended up happening is the amount that we needed for the capitalized interest increased, thus the increase in the temporary notes. On the bonds, we had a similar type of adjustment, a little bit different reason, though. We went from an estimated amount of $12,900,000 to $11,745,000, which actually reduced the bond issue. Now, that, what happened in that one was we received a rather large, over a million-dollar premium on the bonds. A premium, easiest way to probably explain it is essentially prepaid interest. The bond purchaser asks you to accept some prepaid interest, and in return, you then agree to a higher interest rate on the bonds, a higher coupon on the bonds. It's a common marketing technique used by underwriters. It's really that, it's an underwriting, it's a marketing technique. The impact to the city is essentially neutral. What we did in this case was we took that cash that you received, in essence, the cash you received as part of the, as the premium, and we reduced the borrowing, so that the net impact to the city, like I say, is neutral. On the notes, we received two bids. The winning bid was from FTN Financial, which is essentially a part of First Tennessee Bank. The true interest cost on that, these were two-year notes, and the true interest cost was 1.05%, 1.05%. Based on market indices, we believe that this is a competitive rate and appropriate to the city's creditworthiness. On the bonds, the refunding bonds, we received seven bids. The winner was Robert Beverd, and the true interest cost was 1.83%. This equates out, remember, these were refunding bonds, essentially what we're doing is refunding the outstanding, one of your outstanding KDHE revolving loans. This loan runs, still runs until, let's see, I think it's 2020, I had it here somewhere.
2021.
2021, right. And had an approximate par remaining of 12.7 million. So, we'll basically refund that with these new bonds. The savings on a future value basis, basically the cash savings between now and 2021 is over a million, just over a million dollars. So, we saved just over a million dollars with this refund. This bid also, we felt like was in line with market. With that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
The rating.
Oh, the rating, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm trying to be fast. All right. But I'll just mention on the rating, we did get a rating from Moody's, and Moody's reaffirmed the city's existing rating on its geo-bonds of AA3, and also assigned a Mig 1 rating to the temporary notes. Mig 1 rating is the highest rating you can receive for a temporary note.
I thought we were at AA2 before.
No, it's AA3.
AA3.
We were at A2 a while back, and then when they did their global readjustment, we got, we got bumped up two steps to AA3. That's actually higher than Mig 2.
Okay. Questions for Tom?
Under that one section where it says technical corrections, it's on the first page of the Council Action Forum, it says, "Technical Corrections or Clarifications," probably more of a Laura question.
I think this is about polishing. Is that, is it referring to the first issue?
Yeah, what, what technical corrections or clarifications would be expected that Laura would change?
Well, I'm not expecting any, but, you know, periodically, the IRS, through private letter rulings or regulations, adds additional definitions as to how they want you to interpret the Internal Revenue Code. And it could be just a, just that, just a technical matter that may need to be clarified in the procedures in response to, for example, additional information that has been given to the marketplace through private letter rulings or similar items.
So, how would we handle that now?
If it was something that I knew of, that impacted something that I knew the city was doing, I would inform staff of those changes or adjustments or clarification.
And then they would bring it for our approval, or, I mean, what is?
Well, I think it would depend on the nature of what it was, as to whether or not. I mean, sometimes, there are simply changes in the way the code is interpreted or clarifications, the way you notify all clients have distinct, so they'll be aware of it. Wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be something you were doing at the time.
And then, on section 1102, under tax covenants, it says in the event that at any time the city is of the opinion that for purposes of this section, it is necessary to restrict or limit the yield on the investment of any monies held by the city under the resolution, the city shall take such action as may be necessary. What does, what does that mean?
There are a number of circumstances under the Internal Revenue Code that, because these are tax-exempt bonds, that under certain circumstances, the city is required in certain funds to restrict the yield on investments to a yield that doesn't exceed the yield on the bonds. So, let me give you an example. For most of your new projects, like the temporary note project, there is a general requirement for tax-exempt financing of new projects, that those proceeds need to be spent with due diligence within a three-year period. If we get to the end of the three-year period and the money has not been spent, then, then there is a requirement that any remaining funds need to be yield restricted. That information is always included as part of the transcript of proceedings for an issuer. In the current market environment, when your return on investments is so low, it's, it's a practical matter, nobody's having to yield restrict anything in these days, but it could happen.
So, in other words, if rates moved up, then we'd have to restrict them because we can't earn more than what we're paying?
Well, there are a whole bunch of circumstances that you can earn more than what you're paying, but if you hold on to the money for three years and you haven't spent it, then you need yield restrict.
You could see how the IRS might be a little grumpy if we borrowed money on a tax exempt basis and invested it and made money, and they're not getting it because, they're not getting anything because the bond people bought it for taxes. They're not getting their cut there, and they're not getting anything from the city because, so that's why they don't want us to invest things and just sit on the money.
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole tone of the tax-exempt financing regulations are that you don't borrow money way in advance of when you need it, and that when you receive the money, you proceed to spend it on the projects that you intended to spend it on. And so, the regulations are designed to try to keep issuers along that path.
Okay. Doreen, what resolution number would that be?
1868.
1868. How would council like to proceed with Resolution 1868?
I move we adopt Resolution 1868 authorizing the issuance and delivery of $6,245,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, series 2012B of the Gardner, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, for the purpose of temporarily financing the cost of certain internal improvement of the city and approving certain policies and procedures relating to the city's general obligation debt.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we adopt Resolution 1868. Harrison.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Fotovich.
Yes.
Brockerman.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
1868 passes. Next item then is?
The refunding.
The refunding, and that would be ordinance number?
2392.
2392.
And it's $11,745,000.
Any additional questions related to this issuance?
What was that number one more time?
$11,745,000.
Thank you.
How would council like to proceed with Ordinance 2392?
I move we approve Ordinance 2392 authorizing the issuance and delivery of $11,745,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, series 2012B of the Gardner, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, for the purpose of temporarily financing the cost of certain internal improvement of the city and approving certain policies and procedures relating to the city's general obligation debt.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Freeman, that we adopt Resolution 1868. Harrison.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Fotovich.
Yes.
Brockerman.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
1868 passes. Next item then is?
The refunding.
The refunding, and that would be ordinance number?
2392.
2392.
And it's $11,745,000.
Any additional questions related to this issuance?
What was that number one more time?
$11,745,000.
Thank you.
How would council like to proceed with Ordinance 2392?
I move we approve Ordinance 2392 authorizing the issuance and delivery of $11,745,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2012C, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of the interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorizing such bonds to be issued to pay the cost of certain sewer improvements.
Second. I do have a couple of questions, I just, I was on the wrong page.
Motion Morrow, second, Brockerman, that we approve Ordinance 2392.
And so, we're saving basically $100,000 a year?
It doesn't come out exactly evenly, we're saving a million over the course of, to 2021. It's, according to the coupon versus what the debt service was, it's not evenly divided, but yes.
What are we planning on doing with that windfall?
The windfall doesn't really happen for the next four or five years, and it'll just go into the sewer fund in addition to whatever else we've got going, whether we're doing a new project, or refinancing something else, it'll be, it goes into the sewer fund.
And on one, one part of the ordinance, it says, whereas the city has a population with less than 80,000, is not divided, the city into more than one district. Is there ever, I mean, now that we have two, we will have effectively two sewer treatment plants, there are a possibility that those will ever be divided?
That's the definition of district.
And on one, one part of the ordinance that says, whereas the city has a population of less than 80,000, is not divided, the city into more than one district, is there ever, I mean, now that we have two, we will have effectively two sewer treatment plants, is there a possibility that those will ever be divided?
That's the definition of district from the lady that knows.
The reference here is to districts under the statutes that you are authorizing sewer improvements under, and that, you have not done that.
I mean, is there a point at which we anticipate that we could? I mean, we will have, obviously, a sewer plant at 191st and Waverly Road, won't be ours, of course, but...
Yeah. Under that statute, it really has to do with if you wanted to create a separate area of the city that was assessed for certain sewer improvements that were only benefiting that particular area of the city.
I mean, that, that looks like it could happen, right?
Well, if it does happen, then you'd no longer be able to, in the future, proceed under this statute, but right now, you haven't, so you have the authority to do this. If it changes in the future, then you would not be able to authorize bonds under this statute, except assessment bonds under that statute.
Do we have plans to do that?
Not that I'm aware of.
They never came up in discussion.
Well, and not only that, but it's likely to be a KDHE revolving loan, in which case we wouldn't be authorizing it under this statute anyway. That's an entirely different kind of financing.
Okay. There is a motion to approve Ordinance 2392. Morrow.
Yes.
Broxerman.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Fotovich.
Yes.
2392 passes. New business item number three, consider adopting Resolution Number 1869, prescribing the form and details of, and authorizing the delivery of $11,745,000, principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2012C, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, previously authorized by Ordinance 2392.
Step two.
How would council like to proceed?
I move we adopt Resolution Number 1869, prescribing the form and details of, and authorizing the delivery of $11,745,000, principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2012C, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance, by an ordinance of the city.
Second.
Motion Morrow, second, Harrison, that we adopt Resolution 1869. Morrow.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Broxerman.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Fotovich.
Yes.
1869 passes. We have been requested to withdraw the request for conditional use permit on the oil and gas lease. Orson wants to give us an update on that.
Yeah, just of note, we do need to table this essentially to the May 7th meeting, and at that time, we'll take action on it with the governing body if it moves forward. At this time, we're waiting to hear back from the applicant as to whether or not they wish to proceed, but we need official action to table it to another meeting so we can keep track of it. So, May 7th is where they requested.
Oh, they requested, okay. Okay. How would council like to proceed?
I move we table consideration of conditional use permit, CUP-12-01, to the May 7th, 2012 City Council Meeting.
Second.
Motion Broxerman, second, Morrow, that we table consideration of conditional use permit, CUP-12-01. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Staff, updates for council.
Yes.
Some of you may have seen the email from me late today, but I'm sorry, I was in Topeka for a meeting most of the day. Just wanted to let you know that on Friday, on late Friday afternoon, I was asked by the City of Ames, Iowa, if I would like to come work for them, and I responded with a very resounding yes, it's my hometown, and I'm very excited about my new challenges in life, but I will be sad to be leaving here with all the wonderful people that I've worked with over the last almost nine years. So, my last day will be in the office, and it will be the 23rd of May. Thank you very much for all of the opportunities that I've had here.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. I think we'll do something a little more formal, but I want to say that I've had the pleasure of working with Melissa for all of those years, through a number of different, different projects, and through a lot of, a lot of change in the community, and then within city staff and governance as well. And Ames is, Ames is gaining a very good valuable contributor to that group, and I know that there's a certain family in Ames, Iowa, that is more than excited about, about someone coming home, and the Iowa State Alumni Association, you'll be right there in the heart of it, so that's pretty exciting stuff, so thank you, and congratulations.
Counsel, anything for staff? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, Morrow, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.